No.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Nineteen yeas, five nays.
Okay, thank you. Next, our motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Motion exige on the suspension of the regulations of procedure. First one is by Councilor Hubley, second by myself, with respect to a 2019 fare freeze for OC Transpo. The reason suspension is required is because the printing of the passes and so on have to take place shortly. So on suspension, carry it. So Councilor Hubley, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is one that we talked about at Fedco. So I'll read it out. Whereas council on March 6, 2019 directed staff to report back on any potential delay of LRT Stage 1 launch date and report back to the Transit Commission and council on how the remaining transit fares could be frozen and funded to correspond with a future launch date. And whereas staff provided information at Fedco, the Fedco meeting of June 4, 2019, that indicated that delays by RTG in delivering the Confederation Line project mean that the O train line 1 will not open for transit customers before July 1, 2019. Whereas the Transit Commission does not meet until June 19, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved, the rules of procedure be suspended to permit the introduction of the following motion. Whereas council on March 6, 2019 approved the 2019 budget for OC Transpo, providing for fare increases on July 1, 2019. And whereas council on March 27, 2019 approved a reduction in the price of taxi coupons for pair of transpo customers to take effect July 1, 2019. Whereas staff provided information at the Fedco meeting of June 4, 2019, that indicated that delays by RTG in delivering the Confederation Line project mean that the O train following the opening of the O train line 1 to transit customers, so that all technical and operational requirements are met. Be it further resolved that the net cost of the continued fare freeze be initially funded from the Transit Capital Reserve. And finally, be it therefore resolved that the city manager be directed to seek recovery of these net costs with a continued fare freeze from RTG. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Deans has an amendment, which I don't believe is friendly, so you can introduce that.
I didn't expect it to be friendly. The amendment is that city staff report back to the Transit Commission and council on the feasibility of implementing a fare reduction for transit riders effective September 1, 2019, with the cost being deducted from RTG's payment, and that the fare reduction should be commensurate with the reduction in service reliability and remain in place until such time as Phase 1 LRT is fully operational.
Speak to your motion, Councilor. This is your chance.
Okay, well, first I have a question about the motion from Councilor Hubley. Just in general, I am told that we are paying exorbitant amounts of money to OC Transpo drivers in an effort to incent them to take runs. And I'm wondering, Mr. Manconi, if you could confirm that we're paying premiums of up to three and four times the amount of money that we would normally be paying OC Transpo drivers?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as I reported my Fedco updates in the past and in media interviews, we have a great working relationship with ATU and our great staff that have been working so hard through all of these painful detours and delays. And incrementally, the unions have agreed to certain premiums. Three and four times their hourly rate is not factual. There are premiums that we are paying for. It's all been done in collaboration with Labor Relations, as Mr. O'Connor's team's been there, and per the collective agreement, and appropriate employment standards and safety standards. So we have been paying premiums, and that's to extend their runs, to work weekends, special events, and so forth, to continue to do what I've said all along, is to provide the best possible service, given the circumstances. So yes, we've been paying those costs. You'll see that when we issue the update on the cost to dates. We're tracking all those costs, and those will be flowing through to RTG.
Could you just give us the order of magnitude of the premiums?
We are working on that. I do not have that number yet.
Well, you're paying them, you have to know it, you're paying them. So how much are you paying? Like, I'm told you're paying 10-hour shifts for 3 hours of work. Is that the case?
Counselor, we are paying appropriate premiums, and we are, for example, we have to do what are called double bookings, because we've had the delays. And so we've had to pay operators to come in on a weekend booking, so they would get their weekend rate. I apologize, I don't have my hourly rates in front of me. So rather than in a weekday hourly rate for when you come in and book work on your own time, we pay you the Saturday rate. So there's a premium attached to that. And there is a lot of misinformation out there. I know we have people leaking documents to the media. I just had a discussion with one of the reporters right now, and I said, if you've got documents, or three, four times the rates, and you want to share that with me, I'll gladly comment on them. But we're paying per the collective agreement, and where it's appropriate to give additional premiums in collaboration with Labor Relations and collective agreement rights, we're doing that. So three, four-time hourly rates, I don't believe we're doing that. If we are, I haven't heard about that, and I will certainly look into that for you.
Thank you, and I'd appreciate an answer as soon as possible on that. Well, Mr. Mayor, just to speak to my motion on the reduction of transit fares, let me just say that we have heard loud and clear from our general manager of OC Transpo, he has acknowledged that the transit system has become unreliable. And I would say to you that the very principle of fairness would suggest that we should not be charging full fares for a partial or unreliable system. I, like many people around this table, am excited about LRT. It's fundamentally going to change the way we move around the city, and I think in the long run will be great for the city. But unfortunately, while OC Transpo has been so caught up in the challenges around delivering LRT, it seems that someone has forgotten about our customers, the people who ride our transit system every day. And I don't think, Mr. Mayor, that we can assume that we can keep taking our customers for granted, and they will just stick with us. They are fed up, they are supplementing their transit fares with Uber fares and taxi fares, they're losing time at work because they're late for work because of the unreliability of the system that's costing them money. And, you know, we can incent drivers to drive for OC Transpo, but we apparently can't incent transit riders to keep riding the bus. And I think that's a big problem for us. This is a major problem with no fix in sight, and to me, it's completely unacceptable that we don't have a Plan B. We're in a situation right now where we don't have enough drivers, so we can't offer more service, we don't have enough buses, the system is becoming less and less reliable. And frankly, I'm in a position right now, I don't know if others feel the same way, but I'm rapidly losing confidence in the timing of getting this thing up and running anytime soon. And I don't know how long we can just expect our customers to stick with us if we don't show them some respect. Some people might say it's pandering to our riders. I would tell you, it's showing respect to our customers, and they need to be shown a little respect right now. So, members of council, I want you to think about this long and hard. This delay in the implementation of LRT could go on for a long time. Do we want to open a state-of-the-art LRT system and have dramatically reduced our transit rider base? Because that is ultimately what will continue to happen if we don't either provide better service, which I don't see how we can at this point, or we don't show our customers some respect. And, you know, what I am asking you to do is send the bill to RTG, the very same principle upon which Councilor Hubley and Councilor and Mayor Watson are asking for you to freeze transit fares. I don't think that goes far enough. But if the delays are caused by RTG's inability to deliver a system, then they should pay the cost of us maintaining our customer base. And that is what this motion is for, so I ask all members of council to support it. Thank you.
Okay, so on both motions, Councilor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I cannot dispute or argue against the previous speaker, Councilor Deans, about the reliability of the service and the chronic impacts this has had on people in many, many ways. And I do appreciate Mr. Manconi being upfront and acknowledging this at Fedco and many times. He, like everyone, acknowledges that we have a reliability issue and challenges throughout the city. It's not geared to one ward, it affects many of us. A fair reduction won't improve reliability challenges. It perhaps will further acknowledge the pain that has been suffered by many transit riders, but I think it can potentially harm the city and the Transit Commission going forward, because I think it's a giant wish to think that a judge at some point is going to agree that all the costs that we're sending to RTG are going to be paid by RTG. I think a judge will say, on a reasonable grounds argument, a fare freeze is much more reasonable and likely to be paid for by RTG due to the delays than a fare freeze. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Connor, but was there not an opinion shared with council on the feasibility of a fare freeze? Are you able to comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, it was with regards to the proposed fare reduction, yes, the member's correct.
Can you remind council what your advice was on that matter?
We worked with external legal counsel, Mr. Mayor, and ultimately, the, and I'm trying to summarize it down to one line, is that if council does do something like a 30% reduction, it would have an extraordinarily low probability of success for us getting that money.
And I think at the end of the day, even if we deducted in the short term from payments that we would be making to RTG when cell RT opens, the fact that they're likely to come back and dispute some of those charges, the likelihood of us being successful is low. I think a fare freeze, Mr. Mayor, is reasonable. I think that does acknowledge the service challenges that OC Transpo has had for some time. We're all looking forward to LRT opening. There will be a number of route changes and service improvements that this council endorsed through the 2019 budget, $5 million to route upgrades that are going to be forthcoming. But I'm not supportive of a fare freeze. I do believe, sorry, of a fare reduction. I am supportive of a fare freeze, and I believe that is the right way to go in this circumstance.
All right, thank you. Councilman Art, please.
Thank you. I'm getting messages every single day about service levels, so bus cancellations, the delays that people are experiencing, the customers' experience in terms of being responded to, looking for answers, that's been atrocious as well. And so, you know, I think it's important we look at this holistically. I think the motion is well-crafted in that they're asking staff to come back and look at the feasibility of this based on service levels. This just didn't happen, though. The city has deliberately employed a strategy of increasing fares in the face of massively decreasing ridership. And so we've transferred over the percentage that users pay compared to what they used to pay, they're paying a lot more now in terms of the percentage of total transit budget. And that was a deliberate strategy by, you know, the last two councils. Since 2011, OC Transpo has lost 8 million rides a year, 8 million rides. That's in today's dollars, $16 million. Okay, so we've foregone $16 million in revenue as a result of the reductions in ridership. And some of that has to do with Uber and Lyft, some of that has to do with the service levels, but a whole bunch of it has to do with how much we've increased costs. 72% our noncash fare has increased since 2008, 72%. That's more than triple inflation. And so, a fare reduction, I think this motion speaks to, you know, what would we actually get back? How many riders would we gain by a 30% cut or a 25% cut? The numbers that come back from our OC Transpo folks actually differ than what the internationally-accepted standard is. That's fine, but how much would we actually gain back by this in terms of ridership? I think we need to be looking at that. And so, you know, in four years' time, we've said through the Long Range Financial Plan that cash fares are slated to be $4 a ride. And so it's no wonder to me that Uber and Lyft are doing so well in our city, when you're talking about $4 a ride for a person on transit, just ridiculous. So we need to be doing something in this city. The last eight years that this city has employed a strategy around transit has not worked, it's been an utter failure, and it's failing now, and we're not recognizing it. And so I urge my colleagues to support this motion, and let's have that discussion with staff coming back with this information that the council is asking for.
Mr. Manconi, there are a number of accusations thrown about there, some of them not based in fact. One, the councilor just said there's been a massive reduction in passengers. My understanding is rides are up in the last two measurements, is that true?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments. First off, last quarter, ridership is up, and up slightly. In terms of ridership in North America, as we've said over and over again, everyone has seen a decline, some are, only a few agencies are up. Nobody is going through the massive diversions and changes that you've done, so the fact that we're not losing riders, we're either at zero or slightly up, is actually being looked at from other agencies. With respect to Uber and Lyft, I would caution the council, there is no evidence, including a QDA study that looks at ridership, that they're peeling away our rides. And with respect to elasticity, the previous Transit Commission asked for, and we brought forward, an independent assessment on elasticity. That report is on public record, and I've offered to share that with any members of council. So with respect to staffs commenting and other agencies, we are plugged into all of the elasticity methodologies in North America, and I would encourage the council, I'm happy to meet with him, to walk through the independent assessment that was done on the elasticity measures and so forth. So when we quote you numbers, that's not staff making it up, that's professional standards with QDA, APTA, UITP, and the consultant that we brought on board that is renowned for looking at the effect of ridership. And that was in response to some of the comments and suggestions on that in terms of ridership.
Thank you. Councilman McKenney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify, since 2011 to today, what is the difference in ridership numbers?
It's down like every other agency that experienced a ridership down.
But what is the number?
I don't have that number in front of me.
But are you debating that the number that Councilman Art just gave out is incorrect?
Counselor, respectfully, I'm not debating anything. I was commenting on the facts about ridership being down.
But that wasn't my question. My question is, the number that Councilman Art put out from 2000--
Counselor, Counselor. Counselor, your microphone is not on. Counselor, we're not in a debate with Mr. Manconi. He has indicated he doesn't have those numbers, he'll get them for you. Thank you very much, carry on with your questions or comments.
So I will be supporting Councilor Deans's motion. Our ridership is down. Anybody can look at the numbers, they're quite clear. They may have tapered off a bit in the last few months, but they have come down. So we know across the city, people can't get on a bus to get out to the suburbs, we hear that all the time, they're overcrowded, we don't have the buses that we need, we don't have the drivers that we need to deliver a system for the size of the city of Ottawa. We know that, you know, we have a mobility plan for downtown, which is actually doing absolutely no good, because people continue to drive, because we don't have a system to get people into the downtown properly. Almost a year ago, we changed many of our transit routes that, you know, people were unhappy with, it meant longer walks for people and more transfers. That was only supposed to happen for, you know, a couple of months. Today, we're, you know, we have long-term pain for no train today. It's only continuing. I'm a little alarmed that we don't know how much we're paying drivers. If it is a premium, I would like to see that, I'd like to see those numbers. As a council, I think that we have to make sure that we are operating and overseeing a system that is fair, and I want to know what those numbers are. I think that there is an elasticity. We know that the more we raise fares, the less people will take transit, especially in a time like today, when, you know, in your own words, it's not reliable, it's not the system that we need for a city of this size. Let's get more people on our transit system. This motion is simply asking, as, you know, everybody around here wanted to see earlier, for you to report back on what the feasibility is of implementing a fare reduction. What does that look like? What would it cost? And let us decide. So I will be supporting this motion, and I hope that any of my colleagues who are also hearing from very dissatisfied transit riders, that they will as well.
Counselor Cloutier.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Just to point a clarification, this is an addendum, an add-on to the original motion, simply a further "therefore be it resolved," correct? Councilor Dean supports the fare freeze currently, but would like to see this added. Got it. And just to follow up with comments from Councilor Deans, Councilman Art, Councilman McKenney, I don't know how, the main issue that we've heard in all our wards in the last year is the reliability issue. And, Mr. Manconi, kudos to you, in a very difficult circumstance of rolling out the highest-capacity LRT on day one, when the LRT does come into play, how you've kept our 300,000 people in this city, in the large geographic area that it is, and how you've kept it moving, with detours, with coordinating, with the MTO on the Queen's Way. You have done an admirable job, and I thank you for it. I appreciate it very much. There are difficulties. Our staff, our legal staff, will be recovering those costs with RTG as best they can, and within the contract that we have signed with RTG, and that we have sought to improve on Phase 2. And I will note, again, the counselors around this table who voted against Phase 2, who voted against further investment in the LRT, when we passed that on March 6, around this table. My point is, a reduction, given that we have heard the service difficulties that we've had, I don't, and as per the contract, the premiums, the labor issues and the premiums that have to be paid within that union contract, so that we can maintain service as best we can in this difficult time of transition. My point is, I don't know how a 30% reduction in fares, that would, we've discussed elasticity, increase ridership, how that improves service? And that is what we have heard the most from our customers. The buses are full, the detours cause some delays in some routes, how would that improve it? There is no basis for that. There is no basis in the contract for recovering those funds from RTG. And so while I will, I don't know how we will vote for this, I will support Councilor Hubley's motion for the fare freeze. The fare reduction, it takes us down a path that is not one of sustainability, that is not one that improves service to our customers, and is not one that, where those funds could be recovered. And so on that basis, Mr. Mayor, I have no question, but I appreciate the opportunity to have commented.
Merci, Concile. Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the efforts that are being made in terms of putting out an olive branch to our customers out there, but it really is a consolation prize. And what they really, really wanted, what our customers have been saying, is the service. And we're just trying to soften the blow, because we've got problems with our service. In terms of the cuts, I'm asking, is it possible to even reinstate some of the service cuts instead? Because that's the thing I hear about the most. Fair reduction is what we're offering as an olive branch, because, you know, the LRT's not starting up. But some of those service cuts done a year ago, almost a year ago, are still hurting.
Counselor, you're bang on, and that's exactly what I'm hearing from the customers also. And, you know, I've heard several comments about OC Transpo not having Plan B. I can assure you, we have a Plan B. We always have, and we will continue to have a Plan B. And if things get further delayed, as we all know, there are only certain periods of time we can do the service change. The Plan B, because I've heard it loud and clear from every single counselor, that has had two things happen, either the original rollback of the routes for the delay, and also the $5.1 million investments. So the plan that we have mapped out is if there are further delays, we are looking at rolling those routes back in, and we're also looking at putting the $5.1 million enhancements or portions of that in, or substituting other areas. Very, very complicated, lots of work being done, people literally working seven days a week planning all that out. And so that is part of the plan, because it speaks to exactly what you just said, that short-term discount of pennies on that fare does not compensate for my route that used to go further in, in your case, on Route 11, and isn't there because the train isn't there. So that's the focus we're on, and the freeze continues to align with, no, we're not increasing your fares because the train didn't arrive on time. So it's exactly to your point. That's what we're working on. Don't have all those details ready to present, a very complicated algorithm associated with all that from a service plan, and we have multiple-tiered plans within that construct.
When can we hear more about the second plan?
As I said in the past, Mr. Katalakis and I are working on what is the date from RTG on the RSA, and depending on that, we either flow through with trains in service, with modified bus network, or we go to Plan B.
I appreciate that. And notwithstanding, low-income persons are always concerned about fare increases, so, but by large, it is about the service that we're hearing about and the route cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that this amendment is redundant, and that's because yesterday evening at 10:05, we received a memo outlining all the problems with the feasibility of this suggestion. And just for the benefit of people who haven't read it, and for the media who might not have seen it, let me read this section of the memo from Mr. Manconi. If fares were reduced by 30% between July 1 and December 31 of this year, there would be a loss of approximately $29 million in fare revenue. As a result, a funding source would need to be identified to replace lost fare revenue for OC Transpo's budget. Any fare change, other than the pause in the established plans, would take approximately two months to deliver because of the technical requirements to configure the fare, sales, and control systems. Consideration would need to be given to how long the reduction would continue and how, at what point it would end. If there were any reduction in the base fare revenue budget for 2020 and beyond, there would be negative implications for the affordability plans for future transit projects as set out in the Long-Term Financial Plan for Transit. And the legal opinion, the proposed fare reduction has been reviewed by the city clerk and solicitor in consultation with the city's external legal counsel. It is their considered opinion, which during the LRT debate we heard was at No Less Expert, that a claim against RTG for lost revenue associated with a deliberate policy decision to reduce fares has an extraordinarily low probability of success. And that last part of the sentence is in quotes. Mr. Mayor, I don't know why, when, yes, the complaints are, people are crammed on their buses, the buses are late, they're behind schedule, they're canceled, et cetera, why we would suck $30 million out of a system that isn't performing the way we want it to perform today. I would much prefer my bus to show up on time and to get me to where I'm going on-- time than to save, what, 30% on a buck sixteen or 116 is four bucks. We're not going to get to that point until the train opens. We've said that, we've heard that, Mr. Manconi has been very clear about that, we're working very hard to try to achieve that. So that giant sucking sound we'll hear if this gets approved is money that could otherwise be invested to improve service later, keep taxes or fares low later, to provide very little or no value today. I won't support the amendment because we've already got the feasibility information from OC Transpo. I don't think it needs to be considered a transit commission because $30 million is a lot of money, it's money we don't have. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Fleury, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. I sense a lot of frustration by all involved, and certainly it's an echo of the customer experience and the issues relating to service and reliability. I think there's one common thread here, it's our frustration to not see the LRT open. Once the LRT's up and running, we'll have the zones for the buses, which will simplify a lot of the issues that we have today. I think the challenge that I see is the following. If, in some ways, the emotional side of me wants to agree with Diane, but the real and responsible thing is to keep the course and to really push to an LRT opening, and here's why. Mr. Manconi, out of 600 million, your budget's around 600 million, how much comes from the fare?
Approximately 50%.
So, no matter how we skin this, that you be a taxpayer or a user, you're paying for the service, there's a sunk cost into the service. So to me, then the argument goes, well, do we consider, or do we try to recoup the cost from RTG? And, you know, I'd like to hear from Mr. O'Connor on that. Mr. O'Connor, today, under our current provisions relating to the delays, are we in strong legal position relating to enforcing what councils' intents are relating to the delays and recovery of costs?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to allow the deputy city solicitor to nuance that question and answer it appropriately.
We can get Mr. White's microphone, please.
This mic thing is... Oh, there we go. Mr. Mayor, whenever we assess these kinds of things, when a court looks at damages, it's always a question of remoteness. And to echo Counselor Brockton's comments, a question of reasonlessness on the part of the city. Certainly, the city has expert legal counsel that's retained on this issue in particular. The city, who of course will be advancing the best arguments it can make to recover every single dollar that it can with respect to the additional costs that it has incurred or the revenue that it has lost as a result of any failure on the part of RTG to fulfill its obligations under that project agreement.
And how do we ensure that, as councillors, and, you know, when we review these decisions, what can we do to ensure that we're in the best legal position to win this?
To repeat that, what, as I say, you know, with respect to Counselor Brockton's comments, is to be reasonable. Those are the kinds of things that a court will look at to see when assessing whether the city has acted reasonably in terms of minimizing its losses and administering that contract.
Okay. So for me, my comments on this are, it's painful. We all pray and hope for a fall opening of the LRT when people go back to school and back to work. I know we all do, and that would be kind of the grace in all of this. But for the time being, we don't want, we don't need to weaken our position in front of the courts relating to RTG. And if we were to keep the cost into OC's hands, well, it's the same person. So I think, you know, we need to be coherent, and we need to work together to support OC so that they can increase their reliability until the LRT opens, no question. And we need to work directly with customer and thank them for staying on board. But at the same time, we also got into the investments in the LRT, and we can't trip up over that. We can't weaken our position in front of the court, because I think for the time being, we're in a better position than if we were to change the course and not follow what the averages, what we've done in terms of averages relating to fare increase over the last 10 years.
Merci. Counselor Meem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel for the people taking the bus in Ottawa, and those who need to take the bus in Ottawa. And I remember, as many of my council colleagues do, the pain that was endured last winter when buses failed to show up, when buses were late, people were stranded in the suburbs. They're not able to get to school on time, they're not able to get to work on time. The uncertainty that so many people in this city face every morning when they get up is admirable, because they've been putting up with a lot for a long time. I would love to support Counselor Dean's addendum to this motion and a decrease fares. I think that, I agree with her, that the citizens in this city who rely on transit need to be shown some love. But quite frankly, what they need more is a reliable transportation system. And asking them to wait again, and quite frankly, I don't believe the estimates that it's going to be, the train's going to be running this fall. I am scared to death that we are going to be facing the same situation this winter as we were. And I'm heartened that Mr. Manconi says that there's going to be a plan in place for a more reliable bus service. But I think what the transit riders in this city need is, they need to be, have a fulsome plan put in place now that shows them that there are going to be more buses. The buses are going to be there when they're scheduled, that there's not going, that we're going to have some dedicated bus routes. We have to close off some roads this winter in order to get dedicated buses, not sitting in traffic. I think what they need to see is a really concrete plan that we are going to implement in this city. We can't just rely on LRT. Anyone who's traveling in this city these days knows, we've got traffic for miles going east and west and south in this city, and LRT is not going to be the answer. We need better busing now, and we want to see a plan now that we can trot out to people and say, this is going to happen at this certain point. We need you to get on the buses, and we're serious about making that service reliable. We haven't done that. We've talked a lot, but we don't have it in place. You know, the changes were implemented before the LRT last fall. You know, at a certain point, I'm thinking staff should have known that this service was not going to be up and running, and we should have reverted back, not a year later. So let's show the people in this city that we're serious about getting them to work and school. Don't ask them to wait more time. Let's put the, let's concentrate our efforts on the busing. And when LRT happens, LRT happens. But it's not going to be good enough right now. This city of a million people needs transit, serious transit, not just more waiting for an LRT. And that's from the suburbs, east and west, south. Let's get more buses on, and if we have to close roadways, get more cars on, and make dedicated buses down to the core and back to get people to work in school, let's do it. Let's think outside the box. You know, if we can't build roads with dedicated bus lanes, then we're going to have to take a lane of cars off and get buses going in. People want to be on the buses, they want to be on the buses, but they're not going to, willing to sit in traffic and pay what we're asking them to pay. But I'm speaking for the residents of my community, they're sick to death of this. They're sick to death of being told that they have to wait. The time for waiting is done. Let's be serious and show them some love in making sure that we have a bus system that actually works. We're Canada's capital, for crying out loud. We're Canada's capital, and what we're seeing out there right now is a disgrace, absolute disgrace. The bungling has got to stop. Let's make sure that we have the, we have the minds here to do this. Let's get the willpower to do it, to get a decent bus system in before the fall. Because when the fall strikes, and we don't have a train, and we don't have a bus system that works, God forbid, the city's going to ground to a halt. Thank you.
Counselor Shirelli.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to start off with a couple of questions to staff. What do you think the probability is of recovering from RTG the cost of a decrease? And what is that probability versus recovering the cost of a freeze?
Mr. Mayor, as you heard, Mr. O'Connor indicate, the consensus opinion is that the likelihood of recovering the cost of a decrease is exceedingly low. That said, the, again, in terms of a court's ability to draw line of sight between the loss that a party's claiming and the conduct of the other party is something that they'll look at. And so, in the context of council not proceeding with a fare increase that may well have been attributable or accountable with respect to an improved service, is a different argument, at least in my view, than proceeding with a unilateral reduction in its fare revenue. And that's why there's a...
But a freeze is unilateral, too, isn't it? So it's the same principle, only it's a question of degree?
It's a question of degree and a question of the reasonless that a court would see in terms of the city's policy decision in that regard.
Will we be seeking recovery for the cost of the premiums that we're paying drivers?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And do we have a list of the things that we will be seeking recovery from, or is that list not put together yet?
Pardon, I might ask you to repeat that question.
Yeah. Do we have a list of the items which we will be seeking recovery from, for, from RTG, or is that list being developed still and confidential?
Well, it is being developed as the matter progresses and those costs accumulate. So they are being, all of those are being tracked, yes.
Yeah, and I know Counselor Dean's asked for councillors to be provided with that list. Are we getting that list, or is there a reason not to get that list? Where does that sit?
Mr. Mayor, the memo is being finalized. We're just double-checking all the numbers, and there have been some new additions to the cost, to exactly to Counselor Shirelli's point, to make it real. We brought in some vehicle experts literally this week and last week, so we're adding that to the incremental costs, and we're just finalizing all that. And of course, we always vet it with the legal team, so the external legal team has to vet it also.
Okay. Just on the principle of Counselor Dean's motion, I think what the issue is, is trying to retain our customers. So it's just like a private sector business, when something happens and it's providing less service, less product, it typically responds by providing a lower price so that it can retain its customers. I think the advantage to some sort of recognition like this is that you drive home the point that this is temporary, you drive home the point that this is not something that we wanted or were part of, and that it's going to be replaced by a better system very soon. And I'm not sure that a freeze does that. That's why private sector companies don't just bring in a freeze when something like that happens. So I will support the motion.
Counselor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm frankly a little confused by this motion, and I'm confused by the argument that Counselor Shirelli just made. If the issue is service, and I think everybody around this table agrees the issue is service, if we reduce the fares, heck, if we make the fares free, you're still not going to get your doctor's appointment on time, you're still not going to get to work on time, you're still not going to be able to pick your kids up on time. So if that's your issue, that the service is not working for you, then making it cheaper isn't going to keep you on the bus. You're still going to look for an alternative, and that's the hard truth of it. So you can reduce the fees, but if you don't impact the service at the same time, then I don't see that this will lead anywhere good. And I think Mr. Manconi has already said in a previous meeting, I can't remember which committee it was, it might have been FedCo, that with summer coming, the service will actually get better because there will be a redeployment of drivers that are currently doing all the school routes throughout the city, and they, and those drivers and those buses will be used for the regular routes to get people to and from work. So we know that that's going to happen for sure. We know that less people use the service over the summer, and therefore there should be less congestion on the buses. So those are two realities, that whether we have the train or we don't have the train happens every year, and we know it's going to happen this year, that's a given. In terms of whether the train is coming in August or September, October, we don't know that. I'm assuming Mr. Manconi doesn't know that, Mr. Cantalacus doesn't know that at this point, or they would share that with us. I can tell you, though, as a regular transit user, all through my working life, and this morning, I can tell you, people are still excited about the train. A train went by today as I was coming into work, and people were excited to see it. So I think some of that lost ridership is absolutely going to come back when the train goes into service. And I certainly hope that's going to happen by the fall, and I think that's certainly what Mr. Manconi and Mr. Cantalacus and the whole team is working towards. But to simply reduce the fares and then turn around, it's a bit of a shell game. Somebody's paying for that. And even if, to Counselor Dean's theory, that RTG will pay it at the end of the day, the end of the day is a long way down the road. You know, if we take RTG to court, and if we're successful, and if they appeal us, and on and on and on, it's years before this is going to be resolved. In the meantime, guess what? Somebody's paying for that reduction in service, and it's a taxpayer. So by giving a reduction in service, you're just shifting, shifting the shells. The money still has to be paid, and it still has to come from the taxpayer. So, you know, I, in a sense, agree with Counselor Meem. We have to focus on getting the buses working the way they should, and we'll see some improvement over the summer. And we have to focus our resources on getting RTG and Alstom and everybody else to get the trains on the rails and working properly. But to simply go for a reduction, which they're going to have to pay for anyway in some fashion, doesn't solve the problem. It sounds good, it looks great on paper, but it really does very little for the average transit user. It's not going to get you any faster to where you need to go, it's not going to get you any more reliably to where you need to go. In fact, it's going to be more of a challenge for Mr. Manconi and his team to fund the service that we actually do have. So for all those reasons, I will not be supporting the motion. And I think it foments a situation out there, it exacerbates the situation we have. We all know the service is not great, Mr. Manconi's admitted the service is not great. But to keep poking that bear and saying the service is not great doesn't fix it. It just makes people more angry, more frustrated, more upset. It doesn't fix the problem. And reducing the fares doesn't fix the problem. What fixes the problem, us giving a mandate to Steve Kay and Mr. Manconi to go full force with RTG to get them to move, to get that progress going forward, and that's what we need to focus on. We need to improve the service, we need to get the train going, and reducing fares is, it's a shell game, it's a sham, it's not going to fix the problem. It's, as I say, it sounds really good, but at the end of the day, it doesn't do anything to fix the real issue, which is people's frustration with the service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anyone else wish to speak to the item, both items, before Counselor Hubley wraps up? No? Okay, Counselor Hubley, on both.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to tell people a saying that my grandfather told me, and that was, if you can't afford to lose, you can't afford to play. And that was his philosophy on gambling. And to me, this, going after RTG for these costs, we're gambling. We're going to go before a judge and have a judge decide what RTG has to pay back. As our, we pay our legal services good money to give us good advice, and they have made it very clear to us that it's hardly even remotely possible that we could collect that 30%. So therefore, as many of my colleagues have touched on, any attempts to cut the fares by 30%, or as an earlier motion by a councillor, move money from, that's given to us for transit, the $50 million, and move it into something else, that's all a reduction in transit services. I am very comforted to hear by a number of my colleagues that they have the same approach that I have with this as the Chair of Transit. We have to invest in this service if we want to keep those customers that, I'll remind people that our ridership numbers are going up so far every month this year. If we want those numbers to keep going up, and even by bigger numbers, we've got to make improvements in the service. So... So allow me, Mr. Mayor, to take a little walk backwards here to remind some people that maybe weren't around the table at that time and didn't catch our whole dialogue around LRT. We decided that the problem with the OC Transport system back in the early days of 2010, 2011, was it wasn't sustainable. In 2011, I believe councillor Deans was the Chair, we made $22 million worth of cuts out of that system by taking away routes that only had 10 or 12 people on a 70-seat bus, so that we could find money to invest in the routes where people wanted to get on. As councillor Meehan said, and councillor Blake can attest to, and councillor Gower has been doing a really good job of advocating on behalf of his residents that are stuck waiting to get on a bus. We can't move, as part of the LRT discussion, Mr. Mayor, we understood the, there wasn't a problem with adding a bus in Stittsville, for example. The problem is we can't get that bus into the core, or get a bus out of the core in the afternoon to get out there. We had to do LRT. The moment the train is running, and running safely, which is one of the reasons for the delays, we've all agreed, the mandate here is get the train running properly. Once it is running and in service, a lot of what's causing the delays and the disruption in service and the cancellations that our residents are having to suffer through, that's going to go away when the train is running, because it's going to go underground. So if there's a protest or a traffic jam on the main streets of the core, it's not going to affect the underground service. So we made the right decision, we made the right investment. It's just, it's kind of like anticipation leading up to Christmas Day. We know we're going to get a really nice present, it's just we got to wait a little longer to get it. The other part, if I could touch on, please, is I really appreciate that a number of the councillors around the table understand what Mr. Manconi has been pulling off and his team for us. They have been keeping a system running that was not capable of reaching these dates. There's buses that should have been taken out of service, they are breaking down, they are causing us cancellations, but he's kept, Mr. Manconi and his team have kept the service running because our people are going to work and they're getting home. It's not as fast as they should be able to, and some days, it, there's long delays, but guess what? The cars on the road are just as delayed as the buses are, and it's because we are a growing, successful city, and there's a lot happening in it. You know, come out to the West End, or the East End, or the South End, if you want to see the, what a booming city looks like, there's a lot happening there. We got, you know, we're celebrating this week, a million people coming, you know? There's a lot there. But if I could, in closing, I just want to extend my appreciation publicly to Mr. Manconi and every single staff of OC Transport for the efforts that they have put forward to get us here today. So thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hubley. To wrap up on her motion, councillor Deans, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's been a really interesting debate. I have a few things that I just want to get off my chest, and one is that, is I have a problem when I see the politicization of our city staff, and that's what I have seen here today. When I say, "I asked for information last week to be provided to this council on the list of items that RTG would be asked to pay for," and that information is not forthcoming, but information asked for by the other side to support the other side of the argument is forthcoming, I have a problem with that. Council can only make good decisions if we get good, complete, and fulsome information. And I don't believe when information is held back that that leads to the best decisions that council can make. So I'm frustrated with that. I think it's very arbitrary when city staff suggests that this is not a reduction in fares, when you can draw a clear link between RTG not running the service and the reduction of the reliability in this service, for city staff to arbitrarily say, "That is the one thing RTG won't pay for." But a fair freeze, yes, they'll pay for. Exorbitant premiums, shift premiums to transit drivers, yes, they'll pay for that. The numbers, "Oh, we don't have those, or we can't provide those, didn't bring that today." You have to bring us all the information and allow us. We are the decision-makers on this side of the table, and we need to have all of the information to make good decisions. So it is frustrating for me when I see that kind of politicization of our staff, and so I just had to get that off my chest. Well, of course it's fair. If you were paying attention, you would know it's fair.
Sorry, point of order, councillor El Shantiri.
To attack staff, and staff not allowed to respond to this, I don't think that's fair at all.
They can respond, I'd be happy to hear what they have to say.
Councillor Deans, please finish.
Thank you. I agree with what councillor Meehan said. Ultimately, what our riders need and expect is a reliable, safe transit system. And unfortunately, when we have the general manager of OC Transport saying that we're not providing reliability in our service, I think that we need to address it. Do I believe that we will be able to restore full reliability? I would like to see that very much, but when I hear about these exorbitant premiums, lack of drivers, lack of buses, batteries at the end of their life cycle, I'm not clear on how you're going to increase that reliability in short order. So if you can't do that, then I think the only thing you can do is show a little love to the transit riders and give them a reduction. When I go to gas, to fill up my car with gas, if I only get three-quarters of a tank, I don't expect to pay for a full tank of gas, and it's the same principle, you should-
The city pays for your gas.
No, the city does not pay-
The city pays for your gas and your free parking, so-
The city pays for your driver, Mr. Mayor, but the city only pays to us an allowance, yes, for that. But the point is, the point is, when you put anybody, anybody puts gas in their car, they expect to pay for what they get, they don't expect to pay more. I think that's a principle that even you can understand. And I agree that, my sense is that maybe some of my council colleagues have gotten a little out of touch with what's happening in their constituencies with the public, because they don't seem to appreciate when a bus doesn't come and somebody has to get to work, they're going to have to supplement what they're paying in their transit fare with other costs. They are going to take Uber, they're going to take Lyft, they're going to take a taxi. They're either that, or they're going to be late for work, and I've had emails to this effect, saying, "I lost time at work because I was late." So there is a cost to our customers of having this lack of reliability in this system, and all I'm asking for is in some measure, commensurate, I didn't say 30%, I said commensurate, I mean, maybe it is a reduction of 30% in reliability, but whatever that number is, I ask you to tell me what that number is. Whatever that number is, we shouldn't be asking transit riders to pay more than they're getting, and that's what we're doing right now.
Well, I've seen a lot of poorly thought-out motions in my time, and this has to be one of the worst ones. We have an individual who moved a motion or asked at Fedco for 30% reduction in fares. I don't know where that number came from, out of thin air, I suppose. It's not referenced here, because we had a really good memo from the city solicitor, and John Manconi, that was quoted by, I believe councillor Blay, that a 30% reduction would cost taxpayers $29 million. And as many members of council have indicated, you're all looking for more service and better service. Well, it's completely illogical, if you want more and better service on the buses, to take less money in. Because in order to improve the service, it's simple economics, you need more money because you need more buses and you need more bus drivers. And so to suggest and try to hoodwink the public into thinking, "Well, we're going to give you a real deal here," first of all, the motion, according to our legal staff, is so vaguely worded, they wouldn't even be able to implement it. At least the motion by councillor Hubley and myself sets a specific target, has a cost center, and we believe we have a very realistic shot of having this money reimbursed by RTG. Whereas the $29 million, very unlikely that we would get that back. So the reality is that if you want more service, you don't go and reduce the budget of OC Transport, that makes absolutely no sense. So the whole notion of bringing a reduction in doesn't, first of all, it's, I think it's probably not even going to pass the legal test, but I think my sense is, most people around here are sensible enough to know that if you reduce fares by 30%, in a couple of months, you're going to have to increase fares by 30%. And the reality is that we need additional bus service, and we need better bus service, but we're not going to get that by reducing fares and pandering to some people. So I would strongly urge you to vote against the motion, the amendment, for the simple reason that it makes absolutely no sense, and it is pandering. Let's call a spade a spade. It's pandering, it's trying to be politically popular. This is not high school student council, folks, where you have to make tough decisions. And we've seen so many motions have come up at the last minute with no dollars attached to it. Absolutely no way of paying for it, whether it was on cycling and now on transit, there's not one single reference in the motion to cost. And I'm sorry, but where I come from, you got to factor in what it's going to cost. It's plain and simple. We didn't get elected to simply, you know, shake a money tree somewhere and try to find money every council meeting. There's a responsibility on us to be the stewards of the dollars that taxpayers send to us. And so I would also quote the, John Manconi, and by the way, this is the first and last time people are going to be berating staff without apologizing. I think it's disgraceful, some of the accusations that have been brought forward. John Manconi is one of the most noble, sensible, competent general managers of transit that we have ever seen in the history of the city of Ottawa. And to be casting dispersions on him and our senior staff is an absolute disgrace for political posturing and points. So I would urge members of council, I would urge members of council to soundly defeat this motion, which has no sense to it, and no dollars to it at the same time, and quite frankly, no way for us to make up the 39, or the $29 million unless we go back to the taxpayers, because that's our only choice. We have the fare box, and we have the taxpayers. And the taxpayers are already paying 50%, even though some of them don't ride transit, but they also pay 100% of the capital costs. The fare box doesn't even cover the capital costs. And yes, we're all disappointed that LRT is not up and running. But we want to make sure that the system that's handed over to us is working 100%. We're not going to accept a system that's 95% or we're two trains short. And that's why next week, I believe on Tuesday, the president of Alstom International and their president from North America and the RTG president are coming in to meet with me, and I'm going to be very frank with them, that we're not satisfied with their responses or their action to date, and they have to pick up their game and let them know very clearly that we're keeping a list and making sure that all of the costs that we've incurred on behalf of taxpayers of Ottawa are accounted for, justifiable, realistic, and as Mr. White said, would pass the sniff test of a court hearing. So I thank the Chair of Transit, who is working very hard to continuously improve the service, and I thank the people of Ottawa who have been very patient. It is a challenging time. There is so much construction because we have such a short construction season, and we are delayed because of the trains not being ready. But I have great confidence in Mr. Manconi, in Mr. Katalakis, and Miss Similak, and all of the other senior staff, and I would urge members of council to do the decent thing after this meeting, or perhaps in the next day after they reflect it, to go and apologize to those staff they've besmirched, because it's not a fitting of us, and it's unfair. Quite frankly, it's unfair. They're in a boxing match with their hands tied behind their back, they can't fight back because they have respect for us, we should have respect for them. So I'd urge you to vote against the Deans-Shirelli motion, yays and nays, please.
Consé Blay?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Suds?
No.
Consé Fleury?
No.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Egli?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Cloutier?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor El Shantiri?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Meehan?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Druze?
No.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
No.
So on the Hubley-Watson motion, yays and nays, please. Oh, I've called for yays and nays, just as any member of council can. We want to get it on the record that there's good support for a freeze.
Councillor Blay?
Oui.
Councillor Luloff?
Oui.
Councillor Suds?
Yes.
Consé Fleury?
Sûr.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Consé Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor McKenney?
Sure.
Councillor El Shantiri?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Meehan?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Druze?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
24 yays.
Thank you. Next motion requires suspension of the rules is moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hubley, that the rules procedure be suspended, consider the following motion in order to give direction to staff in advance of the June 19, 2019, meeting of the Transit Commission. On suspension, carried, I'll introduce the motion, seconded by councillor Hubley, whereas the city is committed to addressing climate change by reducing its GHG emissions, and whereas the city promotes the use of new and innovative technologies, and whereas the city aims to provide a modern, world-class transit service that is efficient and clean, therefore be it resolved that staff provide a plan to Transit Commission on June 19 to introduce electric buses to the OC Transport fleet within this term of council, and be it further resolved that staff continue to monitor research conducted by various agencies such as the Canadian Urban Transit Research and Information Consortium, and ongoing alternative energy pilot projects in other Canadian municipalities, be it further resolved that staff start working on a plan in this term of council to further expand the number of buses that rely on cleaner sources of energy by 2025, and be it further resolved that staff pursue funding opportunities dedicated to transit and environmental initiatives that may arise at other levels of government to help fund this transition to cleaner sources of energy. Motion?
I'm sorry, I'm the chairman, why are you suspending the rules today?
Because we wanted to go to the June 19 Transit Commission.
Why?
Why? I don't understand.
Yeah, well, you voted for a suspension of the rules, so we're now dealing with the motion. Are you supportive of the motion, councillor Leaper?
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely.
Councillor McKenney on the motion?
Yeah, I just, I see that, you know, I'm happy to see it. We all know that I have a report going to Transit Commission, so I'm guessing you're jumping ahead of me here, which is fine, you're always more than welcome to pick up on my ideas. I just wonder why we are only further expanding the number of buses that rely on, like, by 2025, does that, that we're only starting to work on a plan? I just want to be clear, so by 2025, if this is, if this is approved by 2025, we will not be buying diesel buses or buses that do not rely on clean sources of energy, is that correct? Or is it just a plan to get there? There's a big difference, right?
No, first of all, this was a campaign commitment I made in the election, and secondly, it's laid out very clearly that we want to have some vehicles that are electric and non-polluting this term of council, and that's my goal, and that's the commitment I made to the people of Ottawa.
But I just want to be clear, though, so you're not, you're not committing to buses by 2025. What you're committing to here, or what we would be committing to here, is that staff start working on a plan, just a plan in this term of council. start working on a plan, just a plan in this term of council, to expand the number of buses that rely on cleaner sources of energy by 2025. But, but I want to be clear because it's, it's very important. The difference is, you know, by 2025, if we, if we support this, by 2025, will we be committing to having no buses on our roadways or not buying another bus for our roadway that does not rely on clean sources of energy?
Well, councillor, the whole purpose of the pilot is to ensure that we have the right type of vehicle in the right circumstance. Because as I've been told now by staff, some of the buses that are in the market right now are not suitable for most of our routes because our, our city is so large and they have to go long distances, and the buses are not able to charge. So they would have to look at what routes they're, they're workable on. I think, Mr. Manconi, that, that makes the most sense for us to go and try out different buses, just as we brought a couple of buses in last year with the charging station. So the whole purpose of this is so we don't get into a situation where we go out and blindly say, "We're just going to buy electric buses." We don't even know if they work in our environment or our climate or our geography. So that's the purpose of actually having a plan, costing it out, finding the money in the budget, and getting buses here before the end of this term of council. That's my...
So we could end up with two buses by the end of the term of council, just to be clear.
Sorry?
We could end up with two or maybe three buses by...
We could end up with 10. I don't know. We've got to rely on our staff.
But this is not a plan, this is not a plan to actually remove ourselves from diesel fuel buses. Okay? I just wanted clarification.
No, no, but please, vote against it if you don't support the motion. I'm not going to be offended if you vote against it. Councillor Blay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. 2025 is a year after LRT 2 opens, give or take. I presume there's a conjunction between those two things because after LRT 2, or the routes, as the mayor just described, generally get much shorter, and therefore batteries might be a better option?
That's, that's correct. A couple of things. Technology is moving very, very quickly. You will be, stage one will be done, parts of stage two, and then you have some additional routes that may lend themselves not just to electric, but other alternative fuels. And, and the plan here would be to look at all alternative fuels, which are all currently being piloted across Canada. For example, Calgary's going to CNG and so forth. So we'd look at all those things.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a responsible approach. I recall, not sitting on council at the time, but I recall reading about previous councils jumping in to hybrid buses and technologies that weren't proven or tested or understood how they would work on a system like ours. And it's turned out to be certainly not a success, perhaps even a disaster. And so the best way to go is to understand what will work in our environment for our system with the size of the city that we have, and asking our staff to develop such a plan, taking the time to speak to experts and do the various things they're going to do to develop that, is much more responsible than simply going out and buying a fleet of buses we have no clue will actually work or serve our needs. And so I fully support investing in this process.
Thank you. Counselor Menard?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just wondering, has a cost center been identified for the electric buses this, this term? Has there been a cost center identified for this?
Well, that's, that's the reason why this is going to Transit Commission, for staff to come back with a full report, including where the money's coming from.
Okay, so there's, you're asking for...
And we also have indicated that we'll be going after other levels of government because they're our potential funds, green funds that we could rely on as well would help subsidize it.
And I think that makes total sense. You're asking for a plan at committee, for the committee to discuss the criteria for the plan and to come back with, with funding opportunities. Makes perfect sense. With regard to the 2025 figure, I think it is important we talk about that year because other municipalities have implemented these types of motions. They, they stopped purchasing any sort of diesel buses, CNG buses, non-renewable fuel sources. And there's, they're, they've talked about going to electric at that time. So it's a drop dead deadline. And so I, that's another piece of it that I, obviously, we could be a little bit more bold in this. I think at the committee level, we should have the discussion. I'm happy to see this motion come forward. But on that point, I think we could probably look at it when it comes to committee and have the discussion about what other municipalities have done across North America with regard to, to electric buses and, and that score of what we purchase, when we purchase, how we purchase. So anyway, happy to see the motion. I'll be voting in favor, but I think there's some more discussion on some of the points there.
Yeah, I think, I think you raise a good point, but I think also we want to take some advice or witness how other cities are implementing. Toronto is a different city, as you know. It's about a fifth the size of the geography of Ottawa, and their climate is substantially different. So I think there are other municipalities that have to be similar in, in geography and temperature to make sure that we're buying the right buses at the right time. Thank you. Councillor Hubley, please.
Waiting for, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to touch on a couple of points here. Mr. Manconi, can, you've refreshed my memory, I believe it's Edmonton, but there was a city that implemented electric buses and a year ago, and now they're, they're paying for a very expensive upgrade of the batteries. Was that Edmonton or?
Well, we're, we're in that situation with our hybrids. As you know, they did not get the payback that they were needed. It was earlier generation batteries, and that's why, you know, the, the view we always take is be leading edge, don't be bleeding edge, let others sort this out. You're down to battery run life and charging time. Those are the two issues. And the difference between us, you know, put away weather and all those other things, you have an interline fleet right now, so your buses are putting on a lot of miles. As we get stage one and stage two done, there are some opportunities in the Core that we could deploy these electric buses, for example. And then as we get to stage two, there's other suburban routes. Remembering the benefits of LRT, buses are going to stay local. So when you go to Toronto, the bus number 10 or 11 stays in that neighborhood and just circulates around. So that gives you the quick charge. Montreal's the same. The electric buses they have in the Core right now does a loop, I think it's about a 15-minute loop, hits a four-minute charge and then moves through. So we know what everybody's doing, and it's to that point. In terms of battery, technology is improving literally month by month in this industry.
Thank you. And I, I hope my colleagues, Mr. Mayor, will be responsible custodians of the tax dollar and not jump in and say, "Let's replace the whole fleet right now with electric before we even get a chance to test these." I believe it's Toronto has bought 10 electric buses from three different companies. So the data that'll come out of that testing is going to be very, very helpful for us to, to try and see if this is a move we can go to. But, Mr. Mayor, what's in your, your motion there, too, is that we also have to explore other alternatives. And that's a part, too, that I think many of my colleagues will like, the idea that we're not focusing solely in on one technology. What we're going to do is try to find a bus that will better serve our residents and provide some operational savings for us. Mr. Manconi, last question for you is, could you remind council the price of an electric bus and a charger?
Off the top, I believe the bus is, there's over $1 million, and then the charger, I apologize, I don't have that number at my disposal. I'm getting asked a lot of number questions today, and I don't have them all.
My apologies. Maybe I'll help you. I think it's around $350 for the charging system for the bus. So for the cost of a bus and a charger, we could have two other buses on the road. So when we go to make that decision about what we're going to do here, I, for one, am going to make the decision based on how are we going to serve people in our communities? How are we going to get more people onto buses to the LRT system if that's the direction